And welcome. Violin Board of Education Agenda for the Combined Meeting, 5:00 PM, August 30th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Here.
Ms. Douglas?
Here.
Mr. Finoki? Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Here.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violin Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following: Announcing Time, Place, Agenda, etc., The Daily Journal, S&amp;J Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Noesta Camudida, Visto Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Violin, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, will you please stand for the flag salute? Scott, is there a resolution for executive session?
Yes, there is. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Violin School District will convene an executive session for the following reasons, as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion is in reference to new hires and any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Sorry, who was the second? Yes, thank you. Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Upstaying.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we will enter our executive session, and we will be back momentarily. All right, good evening. Moving on to special presentations, there is none this evening. We have no HIBs to report on, approval of minutes, none. Committee reports, do any of my fellow board members have their committee reports this evening? Ms. Acosta?
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on August 21st, 2023. In attendance were Mr. Yano, Mrs. Demarchi, Dr. Sneeden, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Silva, and myself. We discussed the upcoming professional development. The first topic was the Administrative Academy that was held on August 22nd and August 23rd. We also discussed the new Teacher Academy and the Non-Tender Teacher Academy, which were actually just scheduled for the 28th, 29th, and I believe the 30th as well. We discussed the CUSAC District Improvement Plan for instruction and program. We discussed the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment results. We also discussed the Career and Technical Education, in particular, the launch of middle school career exploration. We also discussed the purchase of a new MacLab for graphic design, which will be at the 910 Building. And we will launch the first year of Health Science Pathways with an articulation with RCSJ. We discussed the Early Learning Network Improvement Community Acceptance, which will launch for years, 2023 to the 2024 school year. We discussed the pre-K through 3rd grade with respect to the Early Learning Network Improvement Community that we will be partnering with. The focus of the Early Learning Network Improvement Community is to improve literacy for our young students. So, the ELNIC is a collaboration between national literacy experts, partners from the New Jersey Department of Education, and a handful of school districts across New Jersey. And for this collaboration, we will be selecting two elementary schools to work with in addition to the preschool program. In each school, the instructional coach will be involved in the work in addition to selected classrooms, classroom teachers. We discussed the Secondary Code of Conduct, and that is something that students will become familiar with and will be given access to. It is, I believe it's already on our website, but students should really take a look at this so they're no surprises. It really pretty much spells out different infractions and the penalties associated with those infractions. We discussed updates to the secondary grading guidelines. We discussed Health and PE pacing guides. All the writing will take place during the 23-24 school year. We discussed the National, I'm sorry, the Social Studies on our Society, the Supervisor of Social Studies to apply for VHS. And the meeting concluded at 5:05. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other committee reports this evening? Seeing none. Public meeting report by our board solicitor?
None.
There's no student representation tonight from the high school. Public comment on agenda items, please limit yourself to three minutes. You can come to the podium when Scott calls your name, and we do have a timer at the front to watch your time.
This is public comment on any matter. William Gonzalez?
Hi. My name is William Gonzalez, and I'm a resident of the City of Violin. Recently, I have had to experience weaponized incompetence from school-level administrators and the same old "we support management" response from the superintendent and the Director of Personnel. This then leads to a new level of targeting, intimidation, and harassment by Principal Karmie Heer and Vice Principal Lauren Koya. When they were witnessed moving items from a teacher's classroom to her new classroom in a disorganized fashion, nothing was boxed up, nothing was marked, but then throwing all of these items throughout the classroom, misplacing items, and yes, Vice Principal Koya also threw poster boards and other items under the sink, leaving several items damaged and missing. This is a poster of the photographs that depict some of the disgraceful, unprofessional approach by the principal and vice principal. I am aware that an administrator was sent to see the room, not sure if any action will be taken or even if any will take place. But given your recent rubber stamp response, not addressing the total concerns shared with you, I have zero faith that you will handle this appropriately. That's why I am here. Staff deserves to work in an environment that is free from weaponized incompetence, targeting, and retributions. I have heard from over 137 staff, you heard that right, over 137 staff that have either left this district, retired, or are still here that have suffered and continue to suffer some sort of targeting at the hands of administrators. You should all be ashamed that this is happening on your watch. This is not over, and I will not stop addressing this and any other issue until you do what is right and separate these toxic administrators and remove them from Rossi School to end the targeting and intimidation. To make matters worse, today, I happen to be looking through some public postings, and I see that a 4th grade position is now available. Well, had we had competent administrators that looked at the totality of what their moves and actions were going to create, none of this would have happened. Our staff and our community deserves better. Thank you. And you can have it, if you're interested, I offer it to you.
Preston Swain?
Hello, my name is Preston Swain, and I'm here tonight to inform the public of our experience at Rossi Elementary School where our two daughters have attended. To make a long story short, our oldest daughter was granted a faulty computer, and when brought to the attention of the faculty, we were told nothing could be done. At my daughter's 5th grade moving up ceremony, my wife and I asked Mr. Frye if there were any extra computers available that could be given out. When Mrs. Heer heard us speaking to Mr. Frye, she immediately became upset and started speaking over us, saying that they were not giving out any more computers and that students were irresponsible and breaking the items. This was just the start of Mrs. Heer's anger towards us for speaking to her supervisor. Following that encounter with Mrs. Heer, my wife was asked to volunteer to teach the 5th grade classes Hawaiian dances, which she did happily. The next day, my wife received an irate phone call from Mrs. Heer. She claimed she had no idea that my wife was coming to the school and continued to express her anger of her being there by yelling at her so loudly that I heard it from an adjacent room in our house. I told my wife to hang up, and we would speak to the superintendent. After Mrs. Heer heard we were going to talk to her supervisor, she immediately called a staff meeting, which included all of the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade teachers. During this meeting, she berated our family and gave out our child's personal 504 information to teachers that have no dealings with our child and should not have access to that information. This led to multiple staff members contacting us and messaging us that we were blackballed at Rossi Elementary School, and we should remove our child because of the vendetta she's going to have towards our family. We contacted Mr. Frye about moving our child to another school due to the problems with Mrs. Heer, which he did grant. Afterwards, my wife spoke to Mr. Frye's secretary due to the fact that we still wanted to have a meeting and further discuss this situation. To this date, we still have not heard back from his office. Knowing that our daughter has a 504 and a high-level anxiety, this move to another school could be devastating to her. This has been a daily battle this summer, trying to convince her that this is not her fault and that moving to a new school would be okay. I believe that Mrs. Heer's actions and unprofessionalism has led to ethics, HIPAA, and FERPA violations, and strongly feel that these violations need to be addressed. With only three minutes to speak, not everything could be addressed about Mrs. Heer's unethical and unprofessional leadership at Rossi School. With that being said, I look forward to speaking to Mr. Frye or Mr. Yanos about these matters. Thank you very much.
Edith Lugo?
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to address some concerns I have regarding our school district as a Violin resident. First and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge Afonso Yanos, the superintendent of our district. Under his leadership, over the past couple years, there have been certain matters that warrant our attention. One of these matters involves the presence of individuals with criminal backgrounds whom Mr. Yanos had introduced to our schools. This raised concerns about our safety and credibility of our educational institutions. Additionally, there have been modifications to the discipline code for students, resulting in a lack of serious consequences for their actions. It's noteworthy that Mr. Yanos obtained his position without being a Violin resident. This raises questions about the financial burden on taxpayers, particularly in terms of the compensation and housing. The community has led to believe Mr. Yanos would reside in Violin and have his doctorate degree funded upon hiring. Have these promises been fulfilled? Furthermore, there are questions about whether the district covers expenses such as cellphone, public vehicles, and housing. Our community boosts numerous qualified residents and teachers who are well-equipped to fill leadership positions, yet we are constantly seeking outsiders and acquaintances of administration being appointed instead. The lack of transparency and equity sends a disheartening message to our hard work to our hard-working, dedicated veteran educators who are overlooked and disregarded for advancement opportunities. I'd like to pose a question. How can we expect our dedicated educators to fully support this administration when they are constantly being disrespected and overlooked? It's disheartening to see four Violin vice principals pass over promotion only for someone like Mr. Yanos to be recommended for the position. The departure of teachers in our district is a cause for concern. Many educators are leaving to seek stability, better discipline, and environments where they feel valued. The revolving door of staff due to inadequate leadership and lack of discipline impacts the quality of our education that the schools can provide. As a member of the elected school board and representatives of Violin, it is crucial that we prioritize the well-being of our students. The current state of affairs is not aligned with the goal. I urge us to consider that practices that have led to these issues and work collaboratively, you gotta have to excuse me, I'm very nervous, collaboratively to ensure that our schools are safe, conducive, and learning, and staffed with qualified professionals who are committed to success for our students. Thank you. Good evening.
Chris Wilson.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of our phenomenal superintendent recommendation for the principal at 1112 building. As we've been discussing this, it's getting very, very repetitive, and it's becoming very, very agitating. As we've been discussing since last October, the lack of representation of minorities hired within this district to teach our kids is starting to get ridiculous. Ninety-four percent of teachers in our district are Caucasian, where we have overwhelmingly minority population in our city. I get it. Great teachers need to be hired. I support it. But it comes a time when I can walk into CC Tech and see more minority administrators in a district that is way bigger than the student population that they have, and they have a higher representation of minority administration and teachers than my own school district that I graduated from, it gets a little bit disheartening. Now, we have been meeting on this topic since last October. We have had productive meetings on this since last October. If we're not going to support the recommendation of individuals that we are paying very big salaries over, why are we voting people to this board? I know many of you up there. Some of you I don't. But it's time to reflect the population of our administration to look like the population of the students that attend our schools. We have some schools that have no African-American representation in the classroom in our district. How is that? Why is that? There's great programs with the MOCA program that are sending individuals this way. There's great applicants that are coming in, that are testing very high, that are doing their due diligence, to be able to find a good-paying job where they might not be afforded to in other districts, that are coming to Violin. This is not the Violin of 50 years ago. This is not the Violin of 70 years ago. We are an inclusive community. And it's time to do the right thing and to, shoot, if it blows up, then it blows up. We're paying this man a lot of money to make some good decisions. If it don't work, then it doesn't work. But at least afford him the area and the right to recommend highly qualified people. We already let the high school coach go. We already voted that recommendation down. And I'm in support of the red and gray. You see my hat. I'm support of that. But we already did that, by the way, and now we're at the point where we can do the right thing. I know I'm a little bit long. I know we're at the part where we can do the right thing and support the recommendation of this phenomenal superintendent. Thank you.
Is there any first, like, come up and speak?
Seeing none. Okay, moving on to motions and resolutions. Superintendent recommendations for discussion and approval by the board consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. So requesting discussion and approval regarding personnel items 1.1 through 1.2. 1.1 is approval of A, B, C, D, E, and F, as noted on our agenda. 1.2, request an approval of substitute custodial workers to maintain December 2023 hourly rate of $18 an hour for the duration of the 2324 school year effective September 1st.
Do I have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Going to vote yes for all, no to the new hire for VHS and the promotion for VHS.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes to all, no to under the replacement hires tab number five, and no to promotion line four.
No to replacement hire, line five?
That is correct.
And?
Line four under the promotions tab.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sabrana?
Yes to all items, but no to line five of replacement hires and line four of promotions.
Ms. Cottis Potty?
Yes to all, no to line, I think it's five, for replacement hires, and no to line four in promotion.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
The vote is 4-4 for the replacement hire. Spreadsheet, line five, and the, one, two, three, four. The promotion page has passed. I had one, two, three promotions as a no. Mr. Holmes, can you repeat your vote, please?
Yes, sir.
I have your vote as?
No for?
No to the replacement hire.
Line five?
Line five, and that was it.
Okay. And then? Let me find it, sorry.
Are you changing your vote?
I am not. So replacement hire, line five?
Right.
Promotion, line four. Vote no votes.
I apologize, I didn't hear that the first time.
No problem.
So then it is 4-4?
With a 4-4 vote, the motion doesn't carry, is denied with respect to those two positions. There must be an affirmative vote in order for it to pass. So a tie vote defeats the motion on those two positions.
On those two employees. Yep. Thank you.
Procedures and operations. Okay, moving forward. Requesting discussion and approval regarding procedures and operations 2.1 through 2.3. 2.1, approval of district travel. 2.2, approval of the submission of the CUSAC district performance to the county. 2.3 is approval of reporting to the executive county superintendent and the chief school administrators of the NJPA state assessment student results for indicator number eight, instruction and programs for the 2223 school year.
Any questions? Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Motion, so moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding finance items 4.1 through 4.3. 4.1, approval of the 2324 PEA state aid notice and budget submission. 4.2, approval of PD in the amount, professional development in the amount of $191 provided by instructional coaching group. 4.3, approval of the following in-service schedule for September 5th and 6th and September 1st PD sessions.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Regular agenda items, there are none. Proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members, there are none. Approval of bills, there are none. Any emergent items with prior approval, none. Old business, none. Any new business this evening, none. Moving on to board member remarks, and please limit yourself to five minutes, starting with Mr. Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the members of the public that came and spoke. Many times, we have different issues that we may agree or not agree on. But it's great to have this forum where we can express ourselves. We can listen to the public. We can go and investigate the things that are said that are being going on. And there's a process. I'm confident in the process moving forward. I'm confident in the process right now that it is being done the correct way. Moving forward, we can always improve. There's always room for improvement. There's always room to better ourselves as a school district in every aspect. But I believe that it is needed for the public to come out and speak. Transparency is key, is always key, and that's always a good thing, to have the public know what's going on within their school district as taxpayers and as parents of kids that go to this school district. I'd like to thank each and every single teacher that's going to be starting work next week, our administrators, support staff. It's going to be a busy year, as always, and we look forward to a successful 2324 school year. Como siempre les pido a los padres que siempre se envuelven en la educación de sus hijos. Hagan muchas preguntas. Y hagan muchas preguntas. Y sean educados en lo que está pasando con los niños en las escuelas. As always, I say to parents to get involved, ask lots of questions, and get involved in the education and get educated in what's going on in our schools. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Mr. Sabrana?
Thank you to those who went to the podium tonight. It's difficult to stand up and speak in front of a group, and I appreciate you taking the time and having the passion to bring these issues forward. And I'll be anxious to see how they're followed up. In all the things that we approved tonight, I do want to mention one thing, that we have five retirees who have a combined total of 135 years of service leaving us. That's going to create a significant void in positions across the whole breadth of our district. We wish them healthy and rewarding next chapters of their lives, and also the best of luck to all of our students and staff and administrators as we get ready for another school year. And we hope it's one that's not only successful, but safe. Thank you.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, I'd like to thank the members of the public that spoke tonight. Your perspective needs to be heard by the board, and hopefully, central administration will follow up on those things in respect to Violin High School and just our campaign for trying to bring minorities back to the district, looking at our track record and my track record with votes. We still advocate for that, but I will not support bringing back minorities just for the sake of bringing them back and they not be the best of the best, qualified, bona fide for the position, especially with VHS, which is in need of great repair. We need people leading that school that are ready to hit the ground running, and it was reflected in my vote tonight. I hope everyone has a great rest of your summer, and good luck to our students that will return back in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Ms. Acosta?
I also want to thank the public for coming out tonight and speaking and advising us of the various issues. I certainly respect that, and many times, it's the first time that we hear about these issues when you bring it to our attention. So thank you very much. I just want to welcome back our students who will be starting in the classroom shortly, as well as all of our wonderful teachers and new staff members. I wish you the very best of luck, and I look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you.
Ms. Douglas?
Good evening. I again would like to always thank the public for coming in to share your opinion, your comments. It is very important that we keep a good rapport with you, and we do want open lines of communication and transparency. And I will agree with the others, as well as it's important for parents to be involved in this upcoming school year. And we're going to continue to work on closing the gap in leadership and closing the gap in representation. And I'd like to believe this administration is working on that, and we're going to continue to do that, but we can only do that with your support, your help, your insight. So I thank you for that, and I'm expecting great things in this new school year. Thank you.
Mr. Yanos?
Thank you. We've had a busy month preparing for the new school year. Freshman orientation was the 15th-
Freshman orientation was the 15th and 16th at VHS. Hundreds and hundreds of students and families came into our buildings, were welcomed, getting ready to embark on their high school career. It was a wonderful couple days. We also had our administrators academy on the 22nd and 23rd. We provided valuable updates and training for the new school year. We also welcomed our new teachers to the district at the new teacher orientation that was held Monday and Tuesday this week. We had over 60 new hires joining us this year. Super excited to welcome these new employees to the district, very excited to have them. I know our administrators are pleased with the quality of our new staff coming in. We also had our non-tenure teacher academy today at Wallace School. We had over 100 participants, would really engage in professional development across all the curriculum and content that our district offers. Our elementary and middle schools have begun hosting their kindergarten and sixth-grade orientations that will continue through the rest of this week. We're also looking forward to welcoming our staff back on Friday to kick off three days of in-service with our students returning on September 7th. Just a reminder to our parents, please make sure your contact information is up to date in the parent portal. Contact your child's school if you have any questions. I also would like to take a moment to address Violin High School. The committee that we worked with presented what we believe are the most qualified candidates for the position. We are extremely concerned about opening up the high school without administrators in charge of those buildings. So Dr. Rossi will be reposting the position. Since this was a 4-4, I'm going to receive clarification if any or all of the candidates are allowed to reapply for the position, and we will get clarification on that process so that we can get moving as quickly as we can. We also have backup plans in case this type of vote occurred, so we will put those plans into place immediately to make sure that we can have a safe and productive opening of the school year. Thinking back, this is the beginning of my third year in Violin. I look back to the day that I had the opportunity to join the district and also to connect with one of our board members who was instrumental in bringing me here to Violin, and she's not here tonight, Ms. Cottis Patti. I wanted to say thank you to her because she was my first major contact with the school district, and many of the things that we outlined when I first arrived to Violin, we've accomplished increasing the diversity of our staff, looking at our programs, redesigning the curriculum and the courses that we are offering to our students. It's been a project. It's been challenging. Change is difficult, but we don't always have to believe the rumors and innuendos that are sent out there because there's facts. If anyone would like to ask me a question directly, email me, meet with me, we meet with parents all the time. Don't believe everything that you hear on Facebook because it's not always the truth. I am encouraged by this committee's and this community's resilience in working with our children because that's who we fight for every single day. We need them to do the best they can. If you could see the energy of those non-tenure teachers today, the 100 staff members that were there, the entire team was there with them today, it's amazing, and these are new and fresh faces. Violin is unique. When we hired our non-tenure teachers, our new teachers, were in this room on Monday, and I asked them, "How many of you are going to this grade level, the next grade level, whatever it may be? How many of you are Violin residents?" You should have seen the number of hands that were raised. This school district employs many residents of the community, which gives back to the community through so many different ways. When we look at the administrators who were promoted in the last two years, 88% of them live in Violin, and most of them were actually Violin administrators, teachers who rose up. I see a few of them here with us this evening. So there's a commitment to promoting the best and most qualified candidates for all these positions. Two of them were presented tonight, and I'm proud to say that the team unanimously supported them. But this is what occurs. We have these situations. We will come up with the next steps, which is to continue to find the best candidates for these critical, critical, critical positions at Violin High School. So I want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you to Mrs. Cottis Patti for being that person who helped, you know, sell me on Violin and welcome me to the school district. It's been an incredible journey. I look forward to being here, supporting, and working with this community as we move forward. It's been an amazing couple of years already, and we're doing great things here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yano. Thank you to everyone who came out this evening, and I welcome you back at our September meeting. It's always great to hear from the public and to get feedback from our parents, so we do appreciate that, and I can assure you that you will be hearing from someone in central office. I look forward to another great school year. I can't wait to see everyone's smiling faces and all those, you know, first-day pictures posted on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter, so I really am looking forward to seeing all the excitement that comes with the first day of school. So everyone, enjoy your holiday and have a fantastic last weekend of summer. Thank you. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.